You're watching CHCO TV's gavel to gavel coverage of the June 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Florence Mitchell. Today's meeting begins with a presentation from Systema New Brunswick. Committee will receive an update on the SMART Goals worksheets and Counselor Heislip will provide an update on the world's oldest basketball court. Mayor McHeckern will provide a community safety update. Drafts of the customer service standards policy, municipal complaints policy, and disposition and acquisition of municipal land policy will be reviewed. Committee will also review correspondence from the Maria F. Genong seniors residence requesting funding for a generator. Chief Administrative Officer Jeff Renaud will receive recognition from the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators for 20 years of service in municipal government management roles. Finally, Mayor McHeckern will declare June of 2024 Pride Month in the municipal district. Now let's join committee in the Moosehead Room at the Garsoen Civic Centre in St. Stephen.
Call to order. Welcome to the Municipal District of St. Stephen Committee of the Whole Meeting, Wednesday, June 12th, 2024, at 6:02 PM. Before we begin, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on the ancestral and ancestral territory of the Pasumacati peoples. So we can get started here. Can I have a mover and seconder for the agenda of, for the Committee of the Whole Meeting, June 12th, 2024, be approved? Counselor Eastman, Counselor Wright, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Agenda approved, I mean. Any conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none. Could I have a mover and seconder for the proposed resolution that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held May 15th, 2024, be approved as presented?
No.
Counselor Harding, Counselor Heislip, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next up, we've got a delegation for Systema, New Brunswick, St. Stephen presentation. Is there, that's you, welcome.
Thank you. So I'm Katrina McLanahan, I'm the Community School Coordinator at St. Stephen Elementary. Thank you. So did I just tell you when I want a slide changed? Okay, okay. So thank you for having us here. Bill and I are here tonight to present the Systema program and we're hoping that the town will give us some financial support for it. So Systema, New Brunswick is part of the New Brunswick Youth Orchestra, it's underneath that umbrella. So their mission is to inspire children and youth to achieve their full potential through learning and performing orchestral music. And I'm going to tell you a bit more about the program. So next slide, please. So Systema, New Brunswick was created to be a social development program. The El Systema started in Venezuela in the 1970s, so it's been going a long time, and it was a social development program to kind of help children living in poverty to achieve more in their lives. And the, sorry, it's very formal. I'm used to being in garments in the back room, so this is like a different, anyway. So, so the, so 15 years ago, the New Brunswick Youth Orchestra decided they wanted to look into the El Systema program and they went to Venezuela and saw what they were doing there and brought the ideas back here. They are international, but there has been established here for 15 years, there's nine centers in New Brunswick, and it's really about moving the needle in generational poverty, which we know is a huge issue in New Brunswick. And we're, it's amazing, New Brunswick is actually, we have more children in the program than anywhere else in Canada, and they're doing it the best. People are coming to New Brunswick to see how to do it right. So that's a huge, a huge thing for us. So next slide. So students are the living evidence of the impact of Systema. Students who are part of the program are more likely to attend school every day, they're more likely to graduate high school, go on to further education. Because they've been going 15 years now, they actually concede, the students, that like this year, they have a student who went through the program, got a full-ride scholarship to music college, first in his family. He grew up in a family with a lot of addiction and abuse and a lot of poverty, and did not expect to be someone that would go to university. He's now graduated from university and he's just got a job coming back to teach in the Moncton program this year because he was so passionate about the difference Systema made in his life that he wanted to give back to the program and to make a difference in other kids' lives. So, but it's not just music, there's kids studying social work, linguistics, sciences, all sorts of things, because the benefit of the program, it's much more far-reaching than just music. So next slide, please. So this is just a quote from one of their students who's studying social work at UDM. "The systemic NB experience has taught me to be brave, be myself, and be determined. It really teaches confidence and perseverance. Part of learning a musical instrument is about learning how to do hard things and practicing and practicing until you can do that thing. And once you kind of realize you can do that, then you can take that into other areas of your life too. So it's not just about the music." So next slide. So Systema, New Brunswick is designed to counter the negative effects of poverty and it does that through the four pillars, inclusion, we do focus more on economically disadvantaged families, people in the margins. It is open to everybody, but there is, we prioritize those kids. Intensity, it has a real impact because it is so intense. A lot of the programs that I've been involved putting in place for kids, I say they feel like a drop in the ocean. It never feels enough because you're trying to make a difference and kind of balance the playing field a bit. But with Systema, it's three hours a day, it's going to be about two and a half to three hours a day, five days a week for the whole school year. So it's a really intensive program and because of that, it makes a huge difference for these kids. And excellence is one of the other pillars, they expect a lot from the kids and the kids rise to the challenge. And ensemble-based, it's teamwork, so they're learning to work together, it's all ensemble-based what they do. So next slide, I'll tell you more about the specifics of the program. So we're partnering, well, the Anglophone South School District is partnering with Systema, so they're providing the space, and they're also providing transportation, which we all know is a huge barrier to a lot of our families being part of programs. So they will, it's for Milltown and St. Stephen Elementary. The Milltown kids will get bussed by the district over to St. Stephen Elementary when school finishes, they'll do the program, and then everybody will get bussed home. So we're going to start this year in September with one teaching artist and 25 kids, they're all going to learn to play the violin. It's an orchestral program in the bigger cities, but because we're small, we're going to focus on one instrument and do it well. So they're going to learn to play the violin, and yeah, we'll have one educational assistant to work in with the teacher to support with behaviors and other things. And they come in and they get a snack, like it sounds intensive doing three hours a day after school, but I went to St. John and saw the kids in the program up there and saw how excited they were getting off the bus with their instruments, and they're really happy to be there, and they're singing songs, and you know, they come off, they get their snack, they, like it's a really nice atmosphere. So 25 kids this year and one teacher, we're going to add a teacher every year for the next two years to build up to three teachers and 75 kids. So next slide. So the budget, you can see up there, we've got, our first year's going to cost less because we only have the one teacher and the 25 kids, and then we've got our five-year total. The community of St. Stephen needs to raise 30% of the budget to have the program continue here, which I think is, is a lot of money, like the program's completely free to all of the students, so nobody pays anything. We've actually, we're saying $50,000 a year because the first year isn't quite that, but we're just dividing our five-year total, we need to raise $250,000 over five years. But Systema, New Brunswick, the New Brunswick Youth Orchestra are investing the other 70% in our community, which is a lot of money they're investing in our kids, and they're going to fundraise that provincially. So we, this is where we're looking for support, we would love a five-year pledge, that's what we've been asking people for. But we're looking for $5,000 or more if you can give it, to support the program. We're so far, and we've only been going about two months, Bill, we've only been going about two months, and it felt really late in the school year to be getting this off the ground for September, but Systema are already so impressed with the community support that they've advertised the position, they did interviews last week, they've sent all the forms home, the kids brought their forms home back this week. We had like about 40 students that really interested in being part of the program, they're super excited about it. So it's going ahead, we are doing it. So so far, we've raised about $27,000 for the first year, but we have $100,000 pledged for our five-year pledges. So it seemed like a lot of money at the start when they told me how much, I was like, oh, that's a lot for our community, but people are really stepping up and we're getting it done. So we would love to have your support. And it is kind of the other towns that it's in generally, like the town does support, I think the Trakady Regional Municipality was $5,000, everybody else is more, but they're bigger, bigger towns, so it's kind of anything from 10 to, Moncton gives $110,000, but they have a lot of kids and it's a big city, so we're not, anyway, just to give you a sense that all the towns do support. So next slide. So our kids are counting on us and we can't let them down. I feel like St. Stephen, we know we're really good at sports, we excel at sports, and I feel like this is a great opportunity for us to excel at arts too. So I think it's a, it's a gap that we need to fill in our community for those kids that need something different, they maybe aren't sporty, and they need something to bring them in and make them feel included too. So that's it. We were, we were at Kingsbury today for the Wild Symphony with Dan Brown reading and the orchestra playing, and it was phenomenal, wasn't it, Bill? It was like out of this world. And those kids were all middle school age or younger, playing music that a professional orchestra was, it was written for a professional orchestra, like it was really incredible. So it's exciting to think about what our kids will achieve. I do have a little video from, from St. John when I went up. So CHCO TV are doing a, I can't remember what the talk show's called, but their new talk show, Something on the Bay, it is, Something on the Bay. So they're, they're doing a segment on Systema, and so we went up to St. John, and this was part of them filling in the kids, and most of these kids, yeah, so this is, like a lot of these kids have been playing for around four years, so this is just the string orchestra in the St. John Centre. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, they start with, they start with paper mache instruments, it's like adorable, and they paint them and make them all gorgeous, and then they learn how to play, hold them, and they sing, and they, they learn how to look after their instruments, and then they have a graduation ceremony where they swap those out for their real instruments, and it's like they, they know what they're doing, it's such a good program, they know how to do it well. Does MD have any questions?
Deputy Mayor?
Hi, well, thank you for the presentation, but you said they would, for the next three years, they would increase the number of students, right? So after three years, because some of these children are playing more than three years, right? So they just continue with the same children, or?
What tends to happen is not everybody sticks with the program all the way through, so there's always going to be some spaces every year to put some new kids in, but they do, they go from, we're going to start, we're, I think we're going to focus on like grade two starting, but the forms went home to all the kids who are going to be in grade one, two, and three next year. We got so many back that it's probably going to be mostly grade two, but a few of the others, and they can go up to grade eight. And then there's actually, in the cities, they would then go to the youth orchestra. We have a local orchestra that's just started up here, and they were asking where the teens are, and I was like, well, give us, give us a few years and we'll have some teens for you. So, so I'm hoping they keep going, because then that'll be a next step for our kids, somewhere for our kids to go that are taking it seriously and want to keep playing. So yeah, that's, there will be some spaces, there's not going to be as many every year, but yeah. You're welcome.
Right.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I did have one question, it said that the first year is a single instrument, is the second year still going to be a single instrument?
Yes, we're going to stick with the violin, because once we add the, the three teachers, they'll be separating out into their levels, so the beginners and the more experienced, and so, yeah.
Thank you. Last night on CTV, I believe they were the same children you're talking about, maybe not the same, but, yeah.
It was the same children, was it?
Yeah, excellent, excellent program. Thank you for your presentation.
Counselor Otis?
Thank you. I also love that it's just tried and true, and it really kind of caters to those kids who can't afford sports or just keep up with the busyness of sports, because sports are quite costly and they require the parents to, to get them there regularly. So is the transportation a continuous thing as well, like after the first year, that transportation never, and that's a solid kind of agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the district is committed to providing the space and the transportation, which if MD's been in a school lately, like space is tight, so the fact that they're providing space, we're really committed to making this work. Yeah, so they are, and they do it in all the other programs, so yeah, yeah.
I could maybe say, you know, a couple of words. I'm Bill Francis, grew up in this town, and starting grade nine with Paul Smythe and learned to play trumpet, and played all through high school and, and college in our big UNB band. And I was talking to Earl, Councilor Earl, earlier that we had back then had a very active Army, you know, cadet corps band, and I was with, we had pipes, and we had drums and bugles, and we had about a 30-piece band, and we loved to go down to the States and play, and show off down there on, at Eastport every, you know, July the 1st, we'd be swinging and going, anyway. But the other reason that I'm, and I've always been in music, but the main reason I'm here is a grandfather, and I have, my grandson Will Francis in Ferguson is eight years old, starting grade one. And he, he is now almost at the top level, he's done that, he's done so well, he's actually getting special lessons from one of the teachers that one day a week, and it's every day for five days that he is there. And as, you know, Katrina mentions, there is some, you know, fall down, but they have to be, you know, you know, dedicated because they're gone, there's no fooling around. The first day Will was there, and the girl was bothering, he kind of hit her with the bowl, and he, he, he was in trouble for a little while, but he's kind of straightened out. But it's, it's such a fabulous thing, and we should, and as, and as a hornblower, we should blow our horn, because Systema, New Brunswick is the tops in all of Canada. Last year, we went down to, to Chicago to a music festival and, and won the whole thing. And I want to thank Jeff for asking us to come to this meeting, because on July, on June the 6th in Moncton, at the D-Day, you know, celebrations, the music was all supplied by that 110-piece band. Dan was on last night, as you say, and, and today we had about 750 kids and people all over that St. Andrews, you know, it was just fabulous. And he was such a genius, this young man, this young man, Dan Brown, because instead of I played in large, you know, concerts, he'd sit there and play, hall play, he sat there on the stage in a big wing chair and talked about the Wild Kingdom. And the first was a bat, and it would screech around, then it was the cheetah, and they did it, it was just, it was just fabulous, the whole time it went on. So we have a lot to be proud of here in our province, and, and so I thank Jeff for tying us into this, because it's all come right in line with what, what we're doing. And this fall, we're going to start, and it's going to be a wonderful thing for our town, and we're going to be including, you know, Milltown, of course, and that's, that's very important.
Thank you, and I appreciate you coming in, sharing this with us, and, and the video was new, new to us, that was nice to have a video on, on the screen. So what was the age of the students on that video?
On that video, I honestly don't know exactly, I'd say they were around like 10, 10, 11, but yeah, yeah.
Someone doesn't have, I'm not talking about here, but funding to support, are you looking for volunteers, that musical people in our area?
Like, we'll be open to volunteers for sure, because the more support, the better, it means more one-on-one for the kids. I guess another point that I wanted to make that I forgot about was that just it will enrich the whole community, not just the kids that are part of Systema, there's going to be concerts, there's going to be, I know there's a teacher at our school that drives her kids to St. John every Saturday to get private lessons from a Systema teacher who teaches on the side. There's a good chance at least one of ours is going to want to teach, and so there's going to be other opportunities for other people in the community as well. So it's, it's a great thing for, for our community, thank you.
Good work. Got my wheels turning, all these things I could be doing, I can picture them, intermission between an event and performing between periods of a game or something. My wheels are turning, anyway, great stuff.
So I'd just like to know the process here now, we're, can we tag this for talks when we're doing our budget and, and consider it then? Is that when we're going to discuss it? Because I don't like people leaving and then they go, well, that went well, but we don't really have a answer, what we're going to do next. And the next thing, we'll discuss it as a council, I would assume, and, and especially around budget talks and what, I don't know, I think, but they're starting in fall, so that's another thing. So I just wanted to go and address that, so they, they might watch this after and see, okay, they've, it's come home, right? Okay.
Yeah, so I was writing down some notes along the, the process side as they were speaking. And one thing, when I met with them in my office, I tried to indicate to them is, the timing isn't a little unfortunate as far as year one, because they are starting in September. As you folks will know, the community grants fund has been pretty much expended at this point, and there's not really specific grant funding left in this year's budget in, in 2024. That being said, things can always be moved around if councils, you know, has a desire to do something. For 2025 and beyond, what we'll, what I'll have is I'll have Celeste send them, send them the, the grants application that we just, the new policy that we just did, and we'll have those applications in, in September per the policy, which feeds it, which directly feeds our budget discussions, like all those, we now require all those requests in early. So we'll make sure that they're, they understand that policy and that program, how that works, and that will help with 2025 and beyond. But if there is a desire from the council to look at doing something for 2024, I would need direction from you to investigate where that money might be able to be drawn from, and bring back a, a report to council along those lines, if there's a desire to do that for the current year.
Investigate that for us, I hope? Yeah, thank you, yes, please.
As a report on, on council this month.
That's right.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, this type of funding on an annual basis would be an operational grant, would it not? Rather than a community grant? And I don't, I don't think we've developed that policy fully yet, have we?
No, but I think in year, I, I expect, what I'm expecting in year one, honestly, is that we're going to get a bunch of requests that are probably, we're going to be sorting in year one, and so better to just get the application forms. The application forms won't be any different, I don't see, we're asking the same questions throughout, so it'll just be a matter of how we want to handle that when we, when we start, you know, doing, doing approvals and, and things like that through our budget process, but that's a good point.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, get into the boring stuff here now, all that fun videos and, okay, so SMART Goal, I guess these are, these are fun too, for people that like goals, SMART Goal worksheets. Do I need a mover and seconder to go in that? No, okay.
So what you have before you is the SMART Goal worksheets that we've been working on since we had our strat planning session. This doesn't encompass, obviously, all the things that we had on our, on our list, but I wanted to bring it forward to give you guys a, a chance to see, first of all, that some of these things are already in progress and moving ahead quite well. Other things you'll notice that, that don't have dates assigned to them, we're going to be looking for guidance from, from you folks as far as a prioritization of these. Now, whether we do that at a committee of the whole meeting or a separate, another separate strategic planning meeting, with whatever you guys prefer, but we are going to, this is going to dedicate how we allocate resources, staff time and, and staff resources, so it's important that we make sure that we're on the same page as to which things get priorities, which are the more urgent ones to get going. So I just wanted to bring these forward, and we can either, either now, if you're, if you're comfortable with it, or, you know, set up another meeting to, to go through these in more detail. But did want to show you that, you know, they, they haven't been lost in, in the fodder down, that we are, that we, Celeste and I keep a, a master binder of all the worksheets in my office, and we update them on a regular basis as, as things are progressing. And this is how we're going to guide our work plan, so it's important that you guys be comfortable with how we're approaching things. If there's any questions from any of you, you know, you can bring it up at a meeting, bring it up, give me a call, give me an email, whatever, and we'll try to make sure that we keep the, the information flow going. I know Counselor Greenline, a note they sent, sent to me, had said that, you know, this might be a good thing to send out on a routine basis, either by email or at the council meetings, or both, as things develop. So, so if there's a preference on how that communication happens, feel free to let us know, but we're going to keep working away at your, your list of items, and, and my goal, my intention again is that this will be brought back in, in even more of a robust form as part of the budget deliberations as well, as we're looking at those priorities as well.
Should there be kind of some sort of a value attached to these, like how much, I don't know, like just putting a value on it as well, like an anticipated value? Or am I even making sense what I'm saying? Like just something, because you're going to need to know that to, you know, you know what I mean? Or maybe you have an idea what they are, just so for budgetary and, and timing and all that, and, and when I say value, it's manpower too, or, you know, staff.
Yeah, I mean, when we get into, again, the priorities, priority setting thing, system that we're going to, however we design that, and it's going to feed budget, budget's going to be the one where we're going to assign values to that, and that, you know, that'll be, we, depending on how we decide to do our, our budget discussions and deliberations, it may be that we set a number for the actual, if it's a contracted out service, this is the budget number we're putting in, but we may also have another column beside that about, you know, the staff hours and things that are associated with that, just, again, to track how much time and effort is going in, in behind the scenes, and then it can be part of the reporting process too, of like, yes, we're under budget from financial side of it, but it's taken longer, more hours than, than we anticipated, and, and just keep you guys in the loop what's going on inside our, the black box that is, that is town hall sometimes.
I mean, I know I say value, we're going to start talking about money, but there's also a return on these things, obviously, some of these things are very important, things to have in the process that we have here, and it would definitely have a return on investment in time too, which is, which is value. Sure, Counselor Eastman?
I, I look at things a little logically here. We're having a hard time maintaining-
We're having a hard time maintaining a, a lot of our stuff. I mean, you got the goals in here for upgrade, upgrade, upgrade. And understand, completely understand. I, I don't, what I don't understand is why would we jump into another vent, venture such as this beach volleyball when we are having a hard time keeping up with everything else that we got on the go? To me, that's a very, very low priority. You know, it's, it's something that I would reconsider looking at before we actually put it in as a goal. Because why start something that we can't fund?
Yeah, and I think that's where that, that priority setting discussion is going to be really important, because if it's a low priority and we put it in the, we'll deal with it in three to five-year window? Great, we'll, we'll keep it on the list because it's a, it may not be a need, but it may be a want, you know? But we can, as, as things get done and it comes up the list a little bit more, it becomes a, it can move up the priority list, or other priorities may still come in above it, right? But if we do this on an annual or semi-annual basis and constantly are adjusting, again, I don't want to waste staff resources on things that, where you guys think that there's a better value and a better priority somewhere else. So this is, I mean, in, in a sense, it's the, it's the work plan, but it's also the accountability and the communication, a, two communication tool between the elected officials and ourselves that makes sure we're, we're working to the same ends. And that's the ultimate goal.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, new business. Any, do you have any updates on the oldest basketball court?
I didn't receive any updates. I just know that work's continuing on the annual Archie tournament down in St. Andrews. And I seen, just personally, I seen Tom on Voices by the Bay there, Tom Liston, and he was discussing the world's oldest basketball court with, with Vicky Hogarth. And they've had a few other, they've hit a few other tours of the court. I think the leader of the opposition was, was there. And our local person that's running for the next election there too, on that side, was over there. So I think those things are still ongoing and there's still, of course, a lot of stuff ongoing. As you see, there's activity in front there with the brick being done and everything too. But I haven't received any formal, formal update this month.
Thank you. Council Harding?
Thank you, worship. David, if this is, or Councilor Heislop, if this is a goal, when is it going to be a goal? 2026, 2027? Do you know that yet?
I wouldn't be able to answer that question. It would be, depending on funding and they're, and they're just going through their second phase of, of fundraising. So it depends on a lot of balls in the air, so it depends on a lot of things, so.
Okay, well, part two of my question is, I think you were the perfect conduit to help us get a hotel here. I've said that to you. I've gone over there and talked to you. I think you're the perfect, because if you want this place to go, which I'm sure you do, you're passionate about it, we want a hotel. So anything that you could do to hurry that along, or talk to people, or whatever, I think would, that would be a perfect plan. Thank you.
Yeah, it's no pressure, right? It could happen. And no, I don't know if I'm the conduit, but I think the, that project is probably a conduit for sure.
Oh, sorry. I'm just glad it went to you and not me, so. Uh, yes. Go ahead.
From my office on this file, couple updates. The Canada First Basketball has prepared a, a lease agreement for the facility that I'm currently reviewing, just got it when I got back from conference. The, we've also had an initial back and forth on a memorandum, memorandum of understanding as far as the partnership, ongoing partnership. That, we're a little bit further apart, I think, on, on some key factors there, but we have a meeting set up between myself and the keys, the, the key executives with Canada First to try and iron out some of those details. The, the important part of the lease, which was, I hope, I expect that I will probably bring forward to you at the council meeting this month, is in order for Canada First Basketball to apply for some of the significant dollars that are out there, they have to have a legitimate interest in the facility and they, because they don't own the building or anything, they, and they don't have an interest. If they have a lease with us, it opens the doors to them applying directly for funding from RDC and other funding agencies. So, which is why we were going down this road of trying to see if we can make this work and allow them to handle that, those grants and not have it flow through us and put more stress on, on our finance department, things like that. So that is being worked on, like I said, and, and the, I know, Canada First Basketball folks, Councilor Heislop, I'll hear from them soon, if he hasn't already, about the lease agreement. But it is under review and it has to go to council for adoption before we can sign it, even if we wanted to sign it right away. So, so it is working very quickly. We're working as quickly as we can through the red tape side of it. But hopefully that'll be going and that'll open up some doors for funding for them.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, David. Council Heislop. Community safety update. See, I, I added the quarterly report in the, in the package for everyone who can review if you haven't already. Compared to other years, compared to other areas around us in Zone, Zone 10 here. I think that, I don't know if they call it Zone 10, but anyway, it's their zone. Anyway, so this area for you to review. And... Where's the end of this? Okay, all right. What's that now, sorry?
The other thing on the community safety heading that we have on the agenda is, we did do a quick report from Mr. Sumner's crew about their daily sweeps of the, of the waterfront, looking for hazards. We will continue to provide that to you as, as they're tracking everything that they come across. So it's a positive report that they didn't, they didn't encounter anything. Not saying that there are not things out there, but their morning sweeps didn't encounter anything during this reporting period, so. But we'll keep you in tune with what we find.
And thank you for that. Appreciate that. Counselor?
I find that trail's been immaculately clean all the time. I try to do that at least twice a day. And it's just because I take my bike and I usually go from Thames, goes down to the end and come back through the trail, and then I go over to Cows, do Milltown, and come back down through the trail before I come home. And it's, it's always, there's, I don't even see a coffee cup or anything around there, so. So people are really doing a good job of scanning. They were planning, planning up here in front the other day. Yeah, it looks really good. I mean, there's a few cones up there where we've had some, some undermining there, but that's to be expected right next to a river, right? So we'll get those things ironed out after a while, I suspect. But I've seen nothing on there, like it's been pretty, pretty good. So I just want to point that out.
Oh, Council Eastman?
I just want to go back into the RCMP quarterly report here. Just, just a comment. It would be really good if we could get an executive summary of all this stuff to, to actually narrow it down where our, our RCMP focus is in this area, in this area, in the municipality area of St. St. Stephen. Yeah, I, I know, you can break this all down, and this is all nice to see, pictures and all this stuff. But, you know, as a, and I don't know if you know what an executive summary is. It's just, it's a, a small breakdown that says, we have X problems, and here they are, boom, boom, boom. And here's our, here's our focus is, to, to, you know.
It does break down each area. I, I know what you're saying, but, but it's all, it's for our whole, it's all, for our whole region, right?
The whole region.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, after anyway, too, just see, see if I can get a better handle of what you're asking. Council Cornish?
I agree with the, Council Eastman, is that this would be a good tool as an executive overview for the municipal district of St. Stephen, that we had a snapshot in time, quarterly, of basically, we could share that with our residents. Looking at this 85-page document, we go from across the province, literally. It'd be nice to have that. And I agree with you 100%. Something, there shouldn't be too much to compile that, I wouldn't think. Yeah.
They also have an active one, you can just go online and, and it's daily updated as you, as you speak too. But, and I'm sure you could do a search. And yeah, Council Heislop, go ahead.
I like to be an optimist, but we used to have that every month. And we used to have the RCMP show up at our meetings every month. And this is what we, we didn't ask for this, what we're getting now, and it just kept given to us. And I don't think you're going to see them spend the time, because if we have to do it for St. Stephen, they're going to have to spend it for every one in the province. And that's the reason we got what we got now. I mean, it's good to ask though. I mean, it's, I don't want to be too pessimistic here, but I'd like to be. But you, but it's a good, it's a good request and, you know, it might not go anywhere, but I wouldn't be too...
Sorry, I just cut you off there. But, I mean, why we're, we're at where we're, why we are at where we're at is because if it's, if you spend so much time preparing stuff, they're not doing the work we want them to do. So they tried to, you know, narrow, or thin it down so they could do their work. And, but in the end of the day, I mean, it's, the information is there. I mean, I mean, more or less what crib notes, you know, just a quick summary. Yeah. But just so you know, no matter what you read on this thing, it's, we got no input in what they're going to do anyway. I'm going to take that very clear. We don't get involved operations at all, you know? We encourage and, and push for certain things, and, and, and we give them our top three priorities, but they still work on all the other priorities, so it's a, yeah. Anyway. Council Rotis?
It, it would be great quarterly even just to have Scott here to just ask a couple questions, because there are a lot of things that I'm unclear on that I see day to day. Like I've, I've noticed this summer, I have watched, like, many drug deals go on around me, like regularly, kind of in the downtown core. And those are things that I don't expect them to be able to, right in that moment, like lay a criminal charge, but even just to be able to say, hey, we've noticed the downtown is quite active in terms of kind of some things going on. Could you just patrol King and Milltown a little bit more often for the next four weeks? Or something like that? Like just, just to give those simple feedback measures? Because I do find a big shift in the types of things that we see that are problematic from the summer to the winter. And some of the things that we were dealing with in the winter have completely flipped, and now we have a different climate. So a lot of those things, I just don't understand the process, and it would just be nice to have him here to say, if I see this, what is the process? Because people in town ask me what the process is, and I say, call them. And, I mean, most of the time, they don't. But at least if they could listen to it here publicly, then he could explain, like, this is what we can do and can't do, and this is why it's difficult, and this is why we're not patrolling regularly. Like, just kind of give some of that insight that's more personable. But I, I do completely respect, this is a lot of work. They've put this document together. It actually is very detailed and very complex, and there's a ton in here. But I agree, for the average person and citizen, opening this, I mean, 50% of New Brunswickers are functionally illiterate, that's a legit statistic. So for a lot of residents, they can't just open this and completely understand it as it's laid out now. It's complicated for somebody with post-secondary, so.
Is, like, if you look at the graphs, they actually change with the seasons of the year too. Like each quarterly report is different depending on weather and season. It does, because sometimes you look, geez, that's doing really good. And he said, no, you wait till next quarter, like in a... Yeah. And I mean, these graphs are, you know, this graph is like, for example, this one here for St. Stephen collisions, that's, that's 12 collisions. Like that's, you know, that's, it looks like a big graph, but it, even one's bad, but there's 12. And then there's four, and there's 18. Like it kind of gives you an illusion that's a lot when you first look, ooh, but anyway. Counselor?
As I requested at the last session, and I'm, I'm still, pretty well similar to what the Counselor Emily is speaking of too. When people ask us questions, we get this every three months. We look at it, we analyze it, we can see it, things have gotten worse or gotten better. But as I mentioned last month, it'd be nice to have a scatter diagram. Probably the local officers can create it. And now you're saying that they're busy and doing other things. But we still have to figure out where things are taking part and where we can start putting some preventative maintenance on it. As an example, in St. John, I know you're shaking your head, Mayor, but I disagree, I disagree with it.
You want, that we, that we don't get involved in operations?
Responsible for the town, people are asking, like, what's going on? They see things on the street. We don't seem to be tracking it. We get a quarterly report, but it doesn't really tell us where. It just, it's a generic report. And I've seen lots of these things, and I agree with Counselor Eastman also. We need something a little bit more executive level and a little, something we can share. People aren't going to look online, they're not going to go online, they're going to ask us, and that's why we're here. So I'm going to say it again. I think we should be developing some kind of a scatter diagram, input from the police or ourselves, or whatever it is, to figure out where it's happening, what's going on, and then start figuring out what we can do about it.
That's a good job for you.
Yeah, probably. But there's more of us around than just me.
A second, I gotta shut this phone off. Council Rotis?
I guess I'm more speaking to just general questions, like when I see Mental Health Act and I see the graph there, I don't, I would love to be able to ask Scott, like, what, what is that actual situat, what does that situation look like? And what's the difference between possession and trafficking? Like in layman's terms, so that when people are seeing something happening, they know the process. Like if I call and if I've seen this, this is actually, just also for their well-being, because people make calls every day, all day, for things that are not a crime, which also is draining on our resources, and it's our taxpayer dollars paying them for people to call and say, I've seen somebody homeless outside my house. So those things add up over time, and then I'm sure that that takes a lot of time from them, whereas I would rather them be able to have the opportunity to maybe patrol the downtown or actually address what's currently happening. But just questions about, like, what is the difference between possession and trafficking? What is an assault versus not? What does mischief even mean? Like what, in layman's terms, so that we can understand? So just want to make that clear. I think it's a great report, and I think there's a lot of detailed information, but just to be able to say, if I see this, would that count as possession?
Okay, I'm just going, okay, go ahead, Counsel.
Just, just, just for reference here, because, I mean, I don't like to be my, like my parents, remember when? Or when, when I was young? Because we've been to, Counsel Harding and, and Deputy Mayor Wheaton and myself, we were on council when they used to come in. And it was not very long ago, and we used to have those conversations, and we get asked those questions. We could also say, there's a lot of four-wheelers around town going here, and there's some places over here that's having problems, or someplace over there. And they'd actually say, yeah, okay, we'll put a couple of people over there. Remember? Remember when? And so that's just changed, and for somehow it changed all across the province. And we fought it, and we just couldn't get it back. And it did lose, and it was about mental health calls, like they said. And they explained that to people, that right now, we're taking most of our time for mental health calls, that we never used to have to do before. And, and you could see where the trends were, and you could see that scatter, but you're not going to, you know, they're, they're just, they just kind of shut the door on us. I don't know how to open it back up again. I don't know how to, and, and I'm sure the mayor does not open up again, and he's, he's right there at the front line, so.
Was, but that's a whole other story. That's just to sign that check. But anyways, what I'm, from what I'm hearing, I, I can't speak for our sergeant, but I, maybe what I'll have him do is come in and maybe sit with council and explain how this is put together. And, but I, I'm not sure he'll do it, but I'll have that conversation with him. And that way, then you, if you can understand it as council, then you can, you can share that with your, your, your community members that are approaching you. And so, yeah, so maybe that, that's what it will take. I'm sure, I'm sure he'll give us some time to have a little sit-down with, with council to... And I mean, they did something different this year too. Like this is normally was an open meeting, we usually had it at the Oak Bay Hall, and they didn't this year. It was just, it was just the mayors in the room, and, in a basement for that matter, and with a screen, and they, you know, they brought a big team in there, but that, that was, it was, anyway, so, okay, well, let's lead up that and, and duly noted, folks, and maybe we can bring them in to kind of share how this breaks down, or at least, at least what I don't understand anyway.[1738.52] Okay. All right. Okay, next up is a draft of the customer service standards policy. All right. So Jeff, you, the floor, sir?
Uh, thank you, Worship. The, actually, the next three items on your agenda are documents that I, that what I would call is still in the, in the working draft forms. And it's, this is where I'd like to come in and do a touch base with you folks, make sure we're not going down the, the wrong trail. The next two policies stem from, one of the goals you gave me at the strategic planning session, which was one for administrative excellence. And one of the things that, in, in trying to figure out the work plan for that, that really became, I, not opening, but obvious to me was that we, in order, if we're going to do that, we need to be able to have measurables, and we need to be able to set standards. And I know we've had conversations in this room regarding, you know, response times for different things, and, and what citizens should expect when contacting our offices. So this is the, the first kind of attempt at, at going down the road of, of setting those standards, and both for, you know, sets public expectations, as well as the, the standards which we can hold staff accountable. So this is the, the first look at it. The nice thing about bringing it as a working draft to this committee is it also puts it into the public realm for public comment. We have received some emails with some thoughts and suggestions and things on these, on these draft policies, which we do read and we do take into consideration and, and make amendments when we, when we find that they're, they're in order. But I just wanted to, again, this is just a touch base with you for, if you think we're going down a wrong road, or we're, we're not quite stringent enough for something in an area, you can, I take those comments now, and we can adjust our, our drafts before we bring in what I would call the final draft to the next committee, before it goes to
Counsel Rotis?
Well, first off, I think this is great, because it's a commitment to really show the community that we do take feedback seriously. One thing I, I will say is I think it would be good for us to decide as council what constitutes, you know, an expression of dissatisfaction could be something, I guess, in legal terms, more frivolous versus serious. Like, I, I would want to make sure that this was not used in a way that's actually going to create a ton of work on staff and would be more potentially, like, even situationally based. Like, I, I read through it quickly, but, for instance, like, if somebody holds an event and they have a genuine complaint about that specific event, then they can put a complaint in. But if they just don't really like something, that's very different than, it's, it's going to be challenging. Yeah, so just that, 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 you know, when you, for instance, break it down, if you go to Subway and you ask for a turkey sandwich, and you get a turkey sandwich, and you just don't like it, that's not really a complaint. But if you get a hair in your sandwich, that's a complaint. So, I'm trying to say, for our municipality, I think it's important that we give staff the tools to be able to almost lay out the, the norms that we would deem as almost non-negotiables or unacceptable things that deem, that are actually complaint-worthy, versus, say, we're completely open to complaints. The customer is always right. However, I just think in light of staff time, there needs to be consideration of how serious these complaints need to be to actually go through this process, if that makes sense. Rather than, I don't like the teenager at the front desk. Like, I just don't want to get into that kind of situation of people coming forward with any and all feelings.
I do think that the, the very next document in our package, the, the municipal complaints policy, when it says this is not designed for these things, would help weed out a lot of those situations that you're, you're referencing. So if we compare, I mean, everybody has a right to submit anything they want and call it a complaint, but if we, if, if staff were able to quickly measure it against those principles, I think those are very fair. Everything could always be adjusted, but I do think that was a great way to narrow them down. Is this an actual complaint, or should it be redirected as a suggestion or a simply comment? So I do think the next document kind of works in tandem, works in tandem and is a great complement to that.
I, I just want to kind of, well, kind of clarify. This is not just complaints. This is just interaction with our staff, too, right? Hopefully, you know, sometimes it's just, it's not a complaint, it's just they're asking for assistance on something, or, or they're having, you know, it's not a complaint, but they're, they're, they're seeing an issue and they want to present it to the town. That, so that would fall in there, too. Yeah. But I do, I do see what Counsel Rotis is talking about, because we don't want to be putting our staff on the spot, especially a young, young person at the front desk. But, but with the proper procedure, that makes their job easier, too, just as long as it protects them as well. Yeah, Counsel Wright?
Yeah, that's why the next document, I guess, is, is the important one to look at if it's called a complaint. So that the first one is the general service standards, and the second one is if it's a complaint. So I just wanted to point our attention to that, because it really does address a lot of these comments that we're wondering about here.
I'm not sure if I missed it in this or not, or maybe it's just a comment. It's great to develop, and they're good, these are all good, and, but the delivery of these, I mean, you're going to have to do training so often to, for employees to, so they know, because it's great to develop policies, as we know. There's a lot of policies out there. There's policies on everything. It's just how to deliver that, right? I mean, if you're going to have a new person at the front desk, are they going to be trained in this and sit down? And maybe there should be like a, a hierarchy of who actually, you know, addresses the complaints? Like, I mean, does the person at the front desk say, okay, hold on, you know, it's delivered to you? Are you the ultimate person that, that does the complaint? Or who, who's the person that actually fields the, the actual complaint in the end, right? Responsibility for it, right? It might be a thing of saying, okay, the person at the front desk said, okay, I'll take the complaint, but I take it to a higher person than that, and that person has to take it to either a section head or, or you, right? So I just want to make sure that's clear in there, too, and the, and the delivery and the training of it, right?
Counsel Rotis?
I'm wondering if maybe, I don't know if it's even possible to do this, but even if we could just trial this with community partners and organizations first, rather than all of the public, and just see what it feels like, and if, if it's a healthy process, because I really think it's a more, I think it's more appropriate once there's a situational complaint. Like, if it's related to an event or a specific interaction, or, and I think that if we almost trialed it as, as looking at offering this to our community partners, if they have something formal they would like to share, we could just trial it as a community partnership type thing, and then see how it feels and kind of build from that. Because just, I do agree with the, the logistics around, you know, the person at the front desk, what is that process? Is that going to create a ton of kind of havoc on staff time? And Jeff?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Sure. With the, with the launch of the, the UN One program, what's going to happen at the front desk is if there's a complaint being registered at the front desk, the, basically, when the, whoever's on the front desk will have a computer screen in front of them, it will ask a set of preset questions, which they just type in the answers, the responses from the citizen, whether that's on, if they're on the phone or there, and then they hit submit. And what'll happen is the computer will say, oh, it's this department, it goes to this department head, or it's about a department head, so it goes directly to the CIO's office. Like, it's all, the, the, the student or the employee at the front desk is just an information gatherer, and hits submit and can give the person on the phone or, or their, a file reference. And then, so once, once they have their file number, if they haven't heard a response within, within the appropriate amount of time, they can call back and say, I'm, I'm looking for, my, my, my file number is this, and, especially my office, will, I'll have a, I have a master dashboard of all things in this program. It's not just complaints, it's also our work orders and things. But I can look up that and say, okay, where is it at in the system? Did we, did we miss the timeline for response? Did we, or whatever it is. So on the front-end lines, it's very, very low, it's just a matter of, it's all preset questions, and I, this is the information I need from you in order to file an official complaint. And if the citizen's not willing to give the information required, then it's not a, it's not a, not a complaint. We can't fill, we can't do it to, enter, you can't enter the program. So it's, everybody, it's, it goes back to our accountability and transparency policy. Everybody gets treated equally at the front, at their front viewing, and then it goes in the system and it gets, the computer actually will sort it all out for us in the background.
Just presented it that way. And not everyone comes to that door complaining, neither their folks. It sounds like this is that poor person, yeah. But it's, I think it's good that it's going to be registered. That's the biggest thing. It doesn't get lost in the cycle with something that may be a bigger fire we're dealing with, and it just, it still sticks around. And has some...
Well, that sounds a lot.
Okay, perfect. All right. So we kind of just wrapped up the next one, anyway, didn't we? Yeah.
We're going to do a few more reviews on this and tweak it up a little bit and bring it back, but it's just, like, then I want to show you that it is something we're working on. And then, once it is adopted, if it is adopted by council, we'll actually put a communications plan behind it to push it not only out into our staff internally for the training side, and here's your expectations and all this stuff, but also to the public way. Okay, when you're dealing with us, this is what you can expect. And if you're not getting this levels of service, here's how, here's how you can deal with that. So just make everything clear. Everybody's working from the same playbook that way.
So, jump forward to the draft, the disposition and acquisition of municipal land policy. Jeff?
So this one is, stems from our, is on your, actually in the worksheets that were in your package, about the, the idea that we would be, we would not hold any surplus land by the end of next year. And one of the steps in there was to set up a, a policy. Again, this is a working, working copy stage, largely modeled after our friends in Moncton who do this stuff very well. So we're, we're going to be going through this again. Again, we've gotten some comments from the public on this, and we'll be taking a look at it. But a few things that I know some counselors have sent me some, some emails about, there's a few things in there about, you know, taking a portion of the proceeds and putting it into affordable housing fund. That is, that is something that, that Moncton does as part of their normal process. We don't currently have an affordable housing fund, but if that's a desire of council to have a pot of money specifically designed to support those kind of projects, then we can't, we can go down that road. So that's going to be a conversation that we can have as we debate this policy moving forward, is, do we just want those, if those funds going to general revenue? Do we want them earmarked for other development? Or do we want earmarked for, at least portions of it, specifically to incentivize the development of affordable-level housing, which we know is, is definitely a need. So it's kind of working, trying to get all these pieces to work together the way that we would, that you folks would want, as far as your priorities go. But that's something to think about over the next little while while we're, while we're refining this, is, you know, how you, how you would prefer that to, to operate, and we can adjust on the, on the fly with that. But it is a, it is a way to earmark some funds off to the side that can come handy when we're, we're negotiating with developers on different projects to help them do some, deal with some of our societal needs in the community.
Counsel Eastman?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I read and analyze these damn things every time. So, on page 77, just a, just a correction there. If you look at M... I'm going to take out Moncton?
I think we may have already done that, actually.
In 79, I had a question on the, on the W, but I think you just touched upon it, on how we're going to relook at this, on how, how's it going to be determined, and by who, and all that good stuff. Yeah, right on. One other thing, one other point, at the end of all of this, on the surplus lands type, I, I would like to see something in there. I felt we got burnt the last time we sold a piece of property here. And we were led down the road of what it was going to be, or, or deemed to be, and then it turned out for something else. I, I'd like to have a council final review on anything before it gets the final signature. So if we learn something later, if somebody tells us something about this, what they're going to do with this land or whatever, and we say, okay, yeah, that's good, that's cool. And then we hear later down the road that this is not going to go that way, before we sign the final document, I think it should come to council to say a a or an a, if they change their mind.
So, like, a whole back, maybe, or something? I don't know.
Really simply, what we're talking about here is, is in circumstances that it's deemed appropriate by council to require a restrictive covenant be part of the agreement. And that's, that's totally, that's totally doable. And, and we can certainly make that part of, all agreements do come in, in, into this room for final approval before they're signed. But it could be a specific review of, you know, yeah, all the legal stuff is there. Do we, do we have a desire or a need to talk about a restrictive covenant on this particular property? And in some cases, it might be very appropriate. In other cases, we would say, no, it's, it's residential, it's an old residential lot that we just want someone to build a house on, sell it, we're, we're out. So, so it'd just be part of our normal review when we, when we look at the documents.
Yeah.
Catch that.
Okay, so next up, we've got some correspondence from Maria Efganong Senior's home, the La Serre Hall, as everyone knows it by. It's in their package here, and as everyone reviewed that. Maybe I'll just read it for the public part of it, sure. What they're requesting financial support on behalf of the board trustees and residents and staff, the Maria Efganong Senior's home. The previous donation was much appreciated from this council, and they received support from the province as well. That was for their, their front Branda renovation that they did on that, which turned out very nice. What they're up to, I'm not going to read all this, but what they're up to, they, they'd like to get a generator to run the building and run their elevator system, and for the seniors who are in the home, is what they're looking for, and they're looking for support. And, and I think they're, what they're looking for is 20,000, I believe. Yeah. So there, there's your correspondence. That'll be, again, that'll be budget time talk again as well, but unless...
We're getting tabled for the legislation.
Yeah, and if that's the will of council?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. So there, we'll put that on the budget talk. Counselor?
I'd like to see, like, if we're going to have a talk about this, we might as well get a little bit more detail. I don't even know what the costing of a Generac thing is, how much they've raised, or anything else. And I'm sure, I don't want to put words in Counsel Greenlaw's mouth, but he likes to, he would like to see their financials as well, before you give money away to someone, or not give money away, you, we're granting them money. And it's, it's a good cause. I mean, there's nothing, no doubt about that, right? But, I mean, I'd like to see what they've raised and what they, you know, what they anticipate the cost, the final cost of the project is. So, we have some kind of where to start and where to, where it's heading, right?
Yeah, you're, I was going to say, all the questions you're asking are all in our application form. So again, we can have, we can have, ask us to send over the forms and ask for them to be filled out and submitted back to us by the deadline, so that they can be put in with the rest of their requests.
Budget time when we start hacking that out, yeah. Yes, Counsel Rotis?
We also need to discuss our own generator before we discuss other ones. I think that's, I mean, they have a great point here, which is they need to be prepared for emergencies, as do we. So I think we have our own kind of, that's something we're going to have to look at, anyway. So, anyway, just got a good intention, and we kind of need the same thing, and it's just good to remember that.
We could all fit in there.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a small generator, right?
Your worship, it's another point, your worship, is that we don't, like, it might not pick up on, on the numbers of people they can actually house there when, during an incident that people want to get in there, and what their, what their protocols are going to be in, and, you know, are going to be as far as that goes. What do you, you know, like, all of a sudden, they have to start announcing that we have space here for so many people, and what's their, what's their protocols and procedures that they're going to follow that? I mean...
That, with their application, that would be more beneficial for them, too, actually. It would help to sell their case, but, yeah, okay. Okay. Oh, next one. Nice. Okay. Yes, huge kudos. And guess who gets to reap the benefits? We do. And, and I, and I want to make that very clear. We're lucky to have, no, we're very, we're lucky and blessed to have someone with the experience and the years' experience, and working with all these other, with Cam... years' experience, and working with all these other, with Cam, and, and, and all those experiences, you know, people think he's going on these trips, what he brings back after he goes to these things, and his international, the other communities. I've, I've seen him firsthand support other communities in our own county, and it's, it's, you know, again, I heard hats off, I heard kudos, and anyway, thank you, and thank you for being here, doing your role for your 20 years, because we're reaping the best part. Someone had to deal with you when you only had five years in, right? But we're getting you with all the experience, so, so thank you for that experience, and, and thank you for your leadership here, and congratulations on your 20-year pin. And if anyone else, Counselor Otis?
Listen, we're a tough bunch, and there's lots of interesting workplaces, but I can say as a counselor, this is the most interesting workplace I've ever worked in, and I just, I want to let you know, Jeff, I've, I've been really pleased, like, the last few weeks especially, we've had a lot of conversations in community, and gotten some great feedback, and I've seen you take in action on things that you've heard directly from the public, even just the customer service policy is a great example of wanting to, when we know better, we can do better, and you're implementing that in real time, so kudos, and thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for growing with us in our growing pains, for sure. But I mean, that's something I spoke of early before the meeting started, is how things are unfolding, and through his leadership, you know, he's got support systems put in place, so now that his team can, has the time to do these things that we're all wanting done right away, like, we all want, everything we want done, but it's all unfolding, folks, and of course, there's new things coming, obviously, but we're in a better position with, with you here with us, Jeff, so I appreciate you steering the bus.
Fire chief, get the jaws of life out and widen out that door just a bit, so Jeff can get out.
I had two calls.
Okay, good. Unless we just leave them here till next meeting.
No, 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 I don't think you understand, we don't want them to be able to get out. Because I got to tell you, there's, there's people looking, so... Yeah, well, we'll just bring in food and feed them. All right, I got to stop this before this gets crazy. Not giving them much. Oh, my goodness. Sorry, okay, go ahead, let's get back to serious here. All right, so anyways, thanks again. Oh, my God. All right, next up, Pride Month proclamation, 2024. Whereas the municipal district of St. Stephen is a community that celebrates diversity, equality, and inclusivity, and whereas Pride Month commemorates, commemorates LGBTQ+ communities' ongoing struggle with acceptance, recognition, and equal rights, and whereas the municipal district of St. Stephen recognizes the significant contributions to LGBTQ+ individuals have made to our community, culture, and history. And whereas it is essential to promote understanding, acceptance, and love for all members of our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender, identity, or expression. Now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim, June 24th, Pride Month in the municipal district of St. Stephen. Thank you. And... Yes, it is. Motion to move into close. You certainly can.
Well, thank you. Yes, I believe that we are inclusive, but one of my very dearest friends is gay, and somehow doesn't feel quite that way. Anyway, I think that we should probably have a gay pride sidewalk down the street in St. Stephen when we first cross the bridge. I think that would be perfect. I think that a, that would show that we're an inclusive bunch of people. Right now, we don't have one, and I think that that's probably derelict on our part. Thank you, Your Worship.
Noted. Yes, you certainly can, Counselor Otis.
I just want to say thank you for that, because it's really meaningful. When you sit at this table, it's hard out there, and we don't always, I didn't expect to get emotional, but we don't always see eye to eye, but even Counselor Harding just saying that, it means the world, so we're all in it together at the end of the day, and if you're a youth out there, and you don't think you could ever sit at this table, you can, and there are wonderful people like Counselor Harding, who've been here a long time, who are willing to speak up and, and pave the way, and, you know, you are one of the reasons I'm sitting here, ironically, because you're a strong female voice, and you inspired me to stay here, and I hope I can be the same for other youth, and I just want to say thank you to Mayor McCaffrey, and just for all the support and making me feel safe.
Okay, I got to jump into close. Thank you, Counselor Otis. Okay, I need to move our second to move into close. Counselor Wright, Counselor Otis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Am I opposed? Motion carried. We are now in the closed.